Let's call this meeting to order and invite you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was informed by Mike Payne that he'd be unable to make tonight's meeting. As we always do, let's start out with public audience. Members of the public have five minutes to address the board, and if anyone needs additional time, I'm always happy to stay after. Let's begin with Joan.
I would like, Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. I would like to bring to your attention allegations that Big Y's site plan approval has expired and they are in the process of selling the property on Hop Meadow Street. Was this a management decision by Big Y that Simsbury is geographically undesirable or with contentious interactions with the town? I recently requested under the Freedom of Information Act the expense reimbursement files for Jamie Rabbit, Director of Planning and Community Development. I'll be reviewing his expenditures in March as requested by the town. According to the management reports submitted by Blum Shapiro on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report 2017, under internal controls, they stated, and I quote, "We noted various functions that were performed by the same individual as follows: The finance specialist at the town has the ability to set up new vendors, print checks, and mail checks," end quote. This has been an ongoing problem with the town where this was noted on a previous audit report dated December 29, 2016. The finance department is short on staff with only three employees to fulfill these requirements of oversight. Since there are allegations that Big Y will be selling the property, the plan for Dunkin' Donuts is moving forward. It is also alleged that Jamie Rabbit instituted preconditions on the Dunkin' Donuts plan that were costly and excessive. This development will merge the two Dunkin' Donuts on Hop Meadow Street into one large store with a drive-through in the north end of town, and this picture shows the process has begun. There is a listing for the sale of the bowling alley on 1603 Hop Meadow Street. According to the March 30, 2017 minutes of CHFA, Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, I quote, "CHFA will be proceeding with the disposition of Eno Farms," end quote. All liens on the property have been lifted, so there is clear title to the property and can be sold. Is the town aware of any advertising for RFP's request for proposal for the property? I hope the town requires CHFA to stipulate that Eno Farms' low-income housing is defined by the Eno Trust and prices the rent structure accordingly. There appears to be a public safety issue in the Simsbury Police Department that should be addressed in the budget. The radios used by dispatch to transmit information to the police officers are old and must be replaced. Many of the transmissions have static and interference during transmissions. Many of the transmissions are not clear and coherent and must be repeated. This could cause a delay in police action that could be serious. Public safety should be priority one in the budget. Many police officers on patrol use this duty bag to place all their equipment needed to address calls while on duty. This is a picture of the duty bag. The duty bag when filled is about 50 pounds. Since all police officers on patrol use this duty bag regularly, I would equate it to their office materials that are equipped with all their supplies. Office supplies for employees are paid by the town. Y of the police officers required to pay between $50 and $80 for equipment that should be government-issued. This amount should be placed in the budget for the purchase of the duty bag. At the last Board of Selectment meeting, February 15, 2018, the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center was seeking a building permit fee of $630 and zoning compliance fee of $25 to be waived for the construction of their ticket booth for the grand total of $655 in waived fees. The ticket booth will be built on town property and used exclusively by the Simsbury PAC. Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts is a private organization that uses the town's land free of charge. The ticket booth that the PAC is re-erecting will have costs associated with the upkeep of the property on a yearly basis. This amount has to be reflected in the town budget. The $655 that this board waived for the private organization could have been used to offset the yearly maintenance costs. Shame on the Board of Selectmen for approving the waivers. The International Skating Center of Connecticut has a ground lease with the town that was approved in 1994. It states, and I quote, "Lee C., which is the International Skating Center, shall deliver to Lesaw Town annual statements prepared and certified by the Lee C." The ground lease has many stipulations for submission by the ISCC and requires town oversight and enforcement. Since the town owns the land under the ISCC and recently there was interaction between the Big Y town and the International Skating Center on road access, it would be prudent to review the stipulations of the ground lease and the requirements to submit financials to the town. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at @JoanCoe, news feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Joan. Anybody else like to speak tonight? Mr. Kalishman.
Thank you. Robert Kalishman, Simsbury. I have an awful lot to discuss today, and I don't think five minutes will be enough, but nevertheless, I'll try my best. And I think the first thing I should more or less address, in the spirit of openness, which we don't have, in my opinion, in the town, is I'm a candidate for representative of the 16th District, which is Simsbury. I'm running for the seat, and I've fulfilled my obligation with the Secretary of State, and I'm accepted. And if anybody would like to add to my petition, I have it, and it would be my privilege to add you to my petition. Having said that, just briefly, I was born February 19, 1933. I've attended the University of Connecticut and Hartford University. I'm a combat war veteran, and I trained a lot of fellas that went to Vietnam, and in many cases, I have a conscience. And there's a few fellas that I trained, and I felt that I could have done a lot better that are without their legs that were in Cuba under the other one Fidel, the one that was going to really free everybody. I feel as a platoon sergeant qualifies me to run the town as well as it's being run. And I served as Justice of the Peace. I've been a constable. I've been the commissioner for the State of Connecticut Veterans Affairs at Rocky Hill. And I want to remind you people that at one time, the State of Connecticut serviced 5,000 veterans. We did operations, we had a hospital up and running, and we had a home. And it was all supported by the federal and the State of Connecticut. Today, we only have a home. We no longer have a veterans' hospital, and if you want to question my validity, just go to the statutes, look at the statutes under Veterans Hospital, and you'll see everything in red, and you can read everything that we had that we no longer have. And I think it's atrocious to do what we're doing to state veterans. If you're a 20-year-old or a 19-year-old kid who's lost your legs, do you want to sit with a bunch of elderly fellas like myself, 80 years old? You want to be with a bunch of young guys, and that's what should be going on there. And lastly, this town is supposed to be serviced twice a month or once a week by a veterans' advisor. I never saw one. And here again, it's the big lie. We tell everybody, but it's never done. Well, if given the privilege to represent you, I will service you and service the veterans properly. Now, there's a couple of things that I'd like to bring forward in good, and like all of yous, I'm worried about my schools. And I have no doubt they'll be protected because we have one of the finest public safety departments, our police department, in Connecticut. That goes without saying. They're head and shoulders above all. And I bring back, every Veterans Day, the youngsters that attend these schools, they give us little cards. "Thank you for being a veteran. Thank you for being served." And now I'm concerned about them. And I know there's a lot of you said, I said, he said, and I think we have to bite the bullet, so to speak, and we have to arm our schools, and whether it's going to be a full-time policeman, this part-time is not going to go anymore. You're going to have to go into your pockets, and you're going to have to go deep, and you're going to have to increase that police budget. And if you don't increase it, it's going to fall on your heads. And not only for that, not only for the safety of the children, young children, but also for the safety of these fellas that are dying in their bathrooms, and the mother can't open the door. And if it weren't for our public service, our police department, a lot of them would be dead.
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman.
And it's not my, these are not my figures. These are the state medical examiner's figures. And it's happening more and more in Simsbury, and it's happening more and more in Connecticut. And it's atrocious. And how does, how's it happening?
I'll ask you to wrap up, Mr. Kalishman.
I'm going to wrap it up. How's it happening? They're taking the marijuana, which we approved of without a hearing, and they're mixing it with phenol, and they're mixing it, they all think they're supermen, and they're mixing it with everything. They're taking it, and it's killing them. It has to stop. And you have to give the public safety, the police department, the equipment and the extra personnel to stamp it out. And there's a lot of things I didn't cover, but thank you for allowing me that time.
Thank you, and I'm happy to stay around after the meeting if you'd like to talk further.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yeah, Holly.
I'm Holly McGrath. I'm here tonight to inform the public and to invite our elected officials to a forum that we're having regarding fracking waste in Connecticut. We're going to meet at the Simsbury Library on Tuesday, March 13, at 6:30 p.m. It's an open forum to discuss pending legislation at the state level that is currently under moratorium banning fracking waste from entering Connecticut. However, that expires July 1. We're also going to discuss the health risks of fracking waste and the impact on the environment with potential spills. We'll have medical professionals and environmentalists that will help us go through all of the details, but I do extend the invitation especially to our elected officials because there have been 37 towns in Connecticut that have passed local bans on fracking waste that is more comprehensive than the current moratorium at the state level. And I believe that Simsbury deserves the chance to be informed about what that entails and whether Simsbury should also take up that issue. We're here just to preserve the health of our environment in Simsbury and the health of our residents, as well as to avoid any exorbitant cost of spilling of toxic waste. If you have any more questions, you're welcome to contact me, and I hope to see you all at that meeting on Tuesday, March 13.
Thank you very much, Holly. Is there anybody else? Okay. So we tonight have one presentation. It's the Town Manager's Budget Presentation for the upcoming fiscal year. Would you want us to interrupt you with questions or save them to the end?
I'm comfortable with either.
Okay.
So, great. And I do have spare copies of the presentation, if anyone would like one. I'll just leave them here.
I'll keep them now. Okay. Thank you. You want one?
I have prepared a presentation for you regarding my proposed budget for fiscal 1819. And I want to lead off by saying that this proposed budget is a starting point. I am only four weeks into the position. I am still getting acclimated to the job and the organization and the community. I also wanted to send many thanks to our very capable Director of Finance, Sean Kimball, as well as our Deputy Town Manager, Melissa Appleby, for their dedicated and outstanding work in assisting me with budget development and helping us get to this point. So I had a number of objectives in mind as I was framing this budget. One was to maintain our current services and programs. Two was to maintain and invest in our existing assets and infrastructure with a focus on cash to capital for our ongoing and routine capital needs. Third, I wanted to advance Board of Selectmen initiatives and priorities as they've been communicated to me thus far, particularly in the areas of economic development, our response to the Deepwater Wind Solar Project, and technology for Board of Selectmen meetings. Fourth, I wanted to maintain or increase fund balance and maintain our commitment to funding our OPEB and pension liabilities. And fifth, I wanted to change the coding on some of our line items to increase transparency and consistency in our reporting methods. Some examples of this are around public agency support, our postage accounts, our new Town Manager's Office budget, and a number of others that we will go into more detail at our Budget Workshop on March 10. So a high-level overview of our budget. Town proposed is $20,087. The Board of Ed budget reflects the number in the Superintendent's Proposed Budget to the Board of Education. You can see that the general fund total for all funds would be just under $97 million, and a number of our other funds are highlighted here as well. Leading off with our revenues for the general fund, approximately 91% of our revenues would come from the property tax. For intergovernmental revenue, essentially state revenues, that's an additional 6%, with our local revenue comprising 2%. I thought it would be helpful for our revenue outlook to touch on the grand list, particularly since we just underwent revaluation. So based on current information, our grand list is increasing by 6.4%, or approximately $145 million in value. Real estate has increased by 7.1%, primarily from revaluation, but new growth has increased by 1.25%, or a little over $28 million in valuation, most of which was real estate. Our motor vehicle value has increased by 0.7%, and personal property increased by 2.6%. The growth in the grand list will likely result in a mill rate decrease for us. And again, I do want to mention that these numbers are based on the most recent information that's available to us. They are subject to change based on the outcome of assessment appeal hearings that will be taking course mostly during the month of March. Another item I want to point out to you with our revenue outlook is that the state cap of 32 mils on the motor vehicle tax was replaced with a cap of 37 mils for the current fiscal year. That is going to change to 45 mils for fiscal 1819. And as a reminder, despite the mid-year change, Simsbury did opt to keep the motor vehicle mill rate at 32 mils for our current fiscal year. For budgeting purposes, we use the assumption that the motor vehicles will have the same mill rate as real estate and personal property for fiscal 1819. And a change in the mill rate cap will shift some of the burden from the property tax to motor vehicles. Moving on to state aid, based on the governor's proposed budget, we would see an additional loss of a little over $200,000 in state revenue for the upcoming fiscal year. Based on feedback we're receiving from our legislators, we're being told that it won't get any worse than that, so hopefully that number will hold firm for us. For fiscal 2017-18, our current year anticipated following our mid-year holdbacks will be a loss of $893,000. So the aggregate loss since fiscal 1617 for us is a little over $1 million in lost revenue from the State of Connecticut. Additionally, the state is proposing to eliminate funding for the elderly circuit breaker program. However, they have not repealed that program, so essentially, we will now have an unfunded mandate. That revenue loss that we budgeted was an anticipated loss of $72,000 for fiscal 1819. Moving on to expenditures for the general fund, the bulk of our expenditures, a little over 70%, will go towards education costs. Public safety at 5% includes police and animal control. This does not include numbers for the fire district. Public works at 4% includes, in addition to public works, buildings and grounds and engineering. Community services captures our library, our general fund contribution to the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as our social services department. General government reflects those departments, mostly administrative in nature, that are required to support our functions here. So that would be, for example, our finance department, including assessment and revenue, our town clerk, our registrars, elections, the town manager's office, again, departments of that nature. Community development includes our planning staff and our building staff. Benefits and insurances, that includes benefits related to providing benefits to our employees and our workforce, and insurance would be items such as our liability and property insurance.
I'm sorry, Maria, is that just on the town side?
That would be, I believe, town, is that town, Sean, or county? That's just town side. Thank you, town. And capital, CNR, and debt service comprises about 7% of the budget, and that is combined town and Board of Ed. So again, a high-level overview of our expenditures with our proposed budgets. The town government budget would be up 3.89% without the contingency that we had set aside for current year for the teachers' retirement contribution and anticipated loss in state revenue. The Board of Ed under the Superintendent's Proposed Budget was a 1.75% increase. Overall, we would be looking with the proposed budgets of an overall increase of a 0.39%. So moving on to expenditure trends, and what is driving that 3.89% increase to town government? Notably, I'll actually back up. Before I jump into the additional trends, I do want to point out that I was made aware of guidance that was provided to us by the Board of Finance in the fall with a 1.75% expenditure increase. In order to maintain current services and to maintain compliance with our existing financial policies, that would require an additional $431,000 in cuts. This would likely result in service reductions or a deviation from our existing financial policies. Again, being so new, making cuts that substantial are not administrative in nature, and I really would require some policy guidance from all of you. If we want to get to that 1.75% and you want to pull $430,000 from the budget, I can certainly work with you. I can provide analysis and cost estimates with some policy guidance in terms of areas you would like me to look at in terms of service reductions. So again, what is driving the expenditure trends? Well, $271,000 are for our contractual wage and step increases. So these are general wage increases that were negotiated in our current collective bargaining agreements, as well as step increases. Additionally, $231,000 would be needed to restore funding for ongoing operating expenditures that were funded in the current year budget with reserve funds. We're looking at an increase to health insurance of just shy of $70,000, an increase to our utilities, primarily for fuel for our vehicles, a $24,000 increase for the board-approved upgrade to the library head of borrowing and technical services position.
For the $231,000?
Yes.
What makes up those?
I have a slide on that.
Okay.
Okay. They'll be coming up momentarily.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Additional increases to town and government, we have $25,000 increase in software costs. $15,000, we have an annual maintenance fee for our server and disaster recovery software. When that software was acquired three years ago, we paid for three years upfront all at once. We are now at the end of that three years, and the annual ongoing maintenance cost for that is $15,000, so we needed to account for that in our operating budget. We also need to implement a Microsoft Exchange Online cloud-based system for our email system. We will go into this in more detail at our Budget Workshop, and the estimated cost of that is $10,000. I have proposed partially restoring our paving funds in the operating budget, as well as an increase to the Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund. Additional increases to town government, we received a public agency request from the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association in the amount of $80,000 to support their operating budget. There are two proposed service enhancements in this budget, in this proposed budget that are relatively modest in cost. One would be $5,000 for organization-wide leadership development and supervisory training. In speaking with the department head team in my one-on-ones when I first came on board, I identified this as an area that I think we could improve upon. I think oftentimes in the public sector, we promote internally because somebody is technically competent and very capable, but we don't necessarily do a good job of providing them with the skills and resources that they need to become a supervisor and to become a leader in the organization. I would envision using these funds towards an annual leadership retreat. That would be a combination of workshops and educational seminars, as well as a visioning process for us where the leadership team comes together in a facilitated manner to talk about what's working well, what's not working well, what can we improve upon, as well as hopefully having enough additional funds to provide some supervisory training to the leadership team. I've also proposed a service enhancement to add one café-style meal per week to the senior center. This would be at an estimated cost of $0.42 per meal served. The participants in this program do pay a modest fee, so the $7,000 in cost would essentially cover the cost of a site server. The café-style programs are gaining in popularity around the country at senior centers. It's lighter fare that's offered. It's a little different from the traditional congregate lunch programs that are offered, so it's typically things like salads, sandwiches, soups. And again, for the value of $0.42 per meal served at this very modest cost, this was a service enhancement I felt comfortable recommending. And we mentioned earlier that the Board of Ed was able to work within the Board of Finance guidance with a 1.75% expenditure increase proposed. So decreases to town government. Obviously, we did not budget for the $2.5 million contingency. We are also hearing that the teachers' retirement system contribution is dead again this year, so we did not budget a contingency for that purpose. We're seeing a modest decrease in our workers' compensation insurance premiums. And we also have a decrease in our debt service payments. What we have proposed doing in this budget is reallocating that fund, or those funds, for cash to capital needs. So under our expenditure trends, the Board of Selectmen initiatives that I have tried to advance regarding economic development, I've budgeted $60,000 in the CNR fund for technical assistance and/or an economic development study or strategic plan, including a community engagement component. I have also maintained level funding for the Main Street Partnership at $45,000. That is budgeted in our existing economic development program budget. I have also budgeted funds for our membership to the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce and have budgeted that in the Board of Selectmen budget. Additional Board of Selectmen initiatives, I've budgeted $50,000 in the CNR fund to assist with our response to the Deepwater Wind Solar Project, anticipating that we will have legal fees, a need for onsite inspections, soil and water monitoring and testing. I've also budgeted $5,000 in the CNR fund for electronic devices to further your goal of technology at your Board of Selectmen meetings. So to Board Member Askam's point, the use of reserves to fund the operating budget, this chart details the amount of money that was used from reserve funds to fund ongoing operating budget needs, and again, that amount totals $231,000.
So we only gave the ambulance 50 grand. They wanted 80, but we only gave them 50.
Right, but the increase to this budget is 80, so we put what was added in this budget, but yeah, that was a decision.
Yeah, but you got to, I mean, because this says that we used reserves for this purpose. We didn't use 80,000. We used 50,000.
Okay, we can correct that slide. Okay?
Yeah. Because we got, I'm only picking on that because we got beaten up pretty hard for that.
Okay. We smell it, we will make the correction.
Board of Finance was not too pleasant about the 50, let alone the 80.
So is there any, so when we get into it and we can discuss it during the budget hearings, but are there other private duty funds that are being used and other funds that we've talked about? Are we eliminating that usage entirely going forward?
Are we eliminating that usage entirely going forward?
Right, as a matter of practice, I would not recommend that we use reserve monies to fund ongoing operating expenses. That if we find ourselves in a position where we have a fund outside of the general fund, that's in a very healthy position in terms of its fund balance, that we could use that to fund one-time expenditures, purchases that are, again, one-time in nature. That would be, in my opinion, a more responsible use of those reserve funds. Depending on the fund, another option would be to take the reserve balances and use towards paying down future liabilities related to OPEB or health insurance. But, again, I would discourage us from using reserves to pay for ongoing operating expenditures.
Agree with you, but the private duty fund really isn't reserves, right? I mean, it's, it's characterized as one on a financial statement, but that's different than our, our.
It's different than general, it's not, certainly not general.
Right. I think I'm not suggesting we use it, but, just, I mean, that's, again, right or wrong, that's been a practice for as long as I've been on this board. Okay. All right.
Another item I wanted to point out in regards to expenditure trends was our public agency support. When I first started, I was trying to get a handle on how many outside agencies were we supporting and in what amount. So we went through the budget, and we categorized our public agency support in two categories. One would be human services agencies and then other agencies. So for budgeting purposes, we have reflected the outside agencies that we're providing contributions to, that provide a human service within the social services budget. The other agencies will be reflected this year in the Board of Selectman budget. In total, our support to outside agencies is a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Again, being new, I realized quickly that we did not have an application or review process set up for the outside agencies. So moving forward, and later in the presentation, I will point out that I think a future area of focus for us should be to develop an application and review process for these agencies, so we have a more clear picture of why they're requesting the funds, how those monies will be used, what the town's return on investment is, number of Simsbury residents being served, but also to create an open and competitive process for the funds, so that all nonprofits serving the community have a fair shot of receiving agency support through this process. Another challenge I wanted to point out was the Simsbury Farms Special Revenue Fund. In order for us to present a balanced budget, we needed to increase the general fund contribution by ten thousand dollars. We also decreased expenditures by ten thousand dollars and had to increase the revenue projections by ten thousand, which may require fee adjustments for programs. Jerry Toner and I have been talking a bit about programs, so these would be programs not specifically related to aquatics or, say, the golf course, but programs, other types of recreational programs that we're currently looking at fees that we're charging, whether or not they're too low, too high, as well as the fee system that we're using in terms of the share of those revenues that the instructors receive. So we are working on that, we're looking at that, we're doing that analysis, and if we feel that we need to increase any of those program-based fees, we would recommend doing so.
So what Jerry told us last week isn't true, then? Because we asked him the question of whether the fees were in line with their budget, and his answer was yes.
Oh, so, wait, so those are the golf course, aquatic, summer camp fees? These are other types of recreational programming.
But it's all the Simsbury Farms fund?
Yes, correct.
So was he right or wrong, then? Because we asked him about the fees that we were structured, that that was gonna balance the budget.
Maybe he was only talking about the fees in line with what was being reported.
Correct. That was my assumption.
Many other functions that are there, so.
I have some thoughts when we're not on TV. Let's move on.
So, as I, I know you're aware, the fund has finished in a deficit position for six out of the last seven years since the cost shifts were implemented in two thousand and eleven. But what I would like to propose and recommend, again, moving forward as a future goal, is that we conduct a cost recovery analysis and have a discussion regarding our programming and our community use of the larger culture parks and recreation department to really determine what inappropriate level of general fund contribution is required to support that community use. GFOA has some recommended best practices in terms of cost recovery policies that can be implemented in terms of whether it's youth programming, adult programming, or senior programming, what is a community's comfort level in terms of cost recovery that's expected or reasonably anticipated. So, again, I think working through that exercise would be incredibly helpful. In my former life in Nancefield, we lived this exact same situation with our Special Revenue Fund for our Parks and Recreation Department. We had a beautiful community center building, and we were in the exact same situation. We went through this exercise, and we determined an appropriate use, excuse me, an appropriate amount from the general fund was about twenty-five percent contribution towards the overall department to support community use. That's what was relevant there. But I do think it would be important and helpful for us to engage in a similar analysis and exercise here to kind of, again, get at what is an appropriate contribution. So moving on to fund balance, our projected fund balance contribution with this budget would be a million dollars. My understanding is how we've been funding that is that we budget a property tax collection rate around ninety-eight and a half percent, while our anticipated property tax collection rate is typically around ninety-nine and a half percent. But, again, this budget does include a million-dollar contribution to fund balance. Our projected fund balance at year-end would be thirteen point eight percent. Something I do want to point out to you is that since the state has been experiencing its financial crisis, bond rating agencies have changed what they are recommending us to keep in our fund balance, and the numbers that we are hearing are closer to fifteen to seventeen percent.
Board of Finance know that, yeah? Good.
These are just a couple of charts to show you how we have done a good job at steadily increasing our fund balance over the years. Moving on to our capital non-recurring fund, I proposed a budget of a little over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What I have included in the C and R fund are capital expenditures that are under a hundred thousand dollars in value, one-time expenditures such as studies, as well as funding for revaluation. Our revenue sources would be the general fund contribution, our standard contribution of about four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. I'm also recommending that we transfer in cash from capital in the amount of an additional one hundred and thirty-six thousand. Again, there were a number of smaller capital purchases that were under that hundred thousand dollar threshold that, given our, my understanding of our financial policies and practices, that would be more appropriately budgeted and paid for out of the C and R fund as opposed to the capital fund.
Say that again? So we're not gonna, so right now, we're paying back five fifty-two, so we're not gonna budget five fifty-two?
We would be budgeting five fifty-two.
To the C and R fund, or are we using an alternative source?
We would be, for the revenue, we would be, so the standard value has been budgeting in the last few years has been four hundred and sixteen thousand, so it's an additional. A hundred and thirty-six of capital purchases. Those are these funded.
You can't just increase your, there's no, the C and R is a fund, and you can't borrow against it unless the funds are there.
Borrowing against it, so the cash becomes directly from that debt service cash from capital line item that now has an additional capacity of about two point two million dollars.
So then the hundred and thirty-six is not C and R. C and R is a fund.
It would be transferred.
Funded as a transfer.
It would be funded in as a transfer.
I understand that, but C and R is a fund where we pay ourselves back over five years. So that's, the one thirty-six is not actually C and R. From the way we talk about C and R.
Historically, it's more similar to how we've talked about those capitals, smaller capital projects that have been capital plan funded with cash. So that's correct. What Maria's proposing is using the C and R fund as a vehicle. We can get more into detail about.
It's an approval mechanism, but we're funding it from another source, kinda like LoSIP?
Correct.
LoSIP is the C and R vehicle? Excuse me, LoSIP is the approval vehicle?
That one thirty-six, five hundred, I assume that's included as part of the three point eight nine percent increase?
Yes. So planned uses for the C and R fund would be studies and technical assistance. Again, we already touched on economic development in our Deepwater Wind response. I'm also proposing funding Phase One of our radio system feasibility study. This is for our emergency radio system. This would be used by the police department primarily. And, again, the first phase, based on estimates we've received from towns in the area who've completed Phase One recently, would be around forty thousand dollars. There would be a second phase that would be needed after that initial assessment and feasibility study is conducted, ultimately working towards a plan for replacement of our emergency radio system. What's neat about this particular study is we have an opportunity to engage in a regional initiative. There are a number of communities in the area that also know that replacing their emergency radio system is on the horizon and that they need to also conduct essentially a Phase One study. So if the funding were to be available, CROG has said that they will assist us in issuing an RFQ in which we can do a joint RFQ, interview firms collectively, ultimately hopefully using purchasing power to lower the price that we could hopefully obtain for that particular study. And we've also proposed funding year one of four for revaluation. We have proposed replacement, focusing on replacement of fleet vehicles, so patrol vehicles, as well as a small replacement of dump truck for buildings and grounds. Also focusing on replacement items under equipment, a front-end rotary mower for parks and rec, an ice resurfacer, replacement AEDs for the police department, replacement computers for the library children's room and staff in that particular department of the library, replacement tractor winter attachments for buildings and ground, and this is where the electronic devices for Board of Selectmen shows in the budget. Lastly, for C and R, we have proposed some modest repairs to the Eno Hall stairway and railings. So for our capital budget, revenues and expenditures, we can see it's a little under three million. This particular slide does not include education projects or town projects that are shown in special revenue funds. So our major projects for the capital fund, again, focusing on maintaining our existing infrastructure and our existing assets for culture parks and recreation, would be greenway improvements and the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. So that would be resurfacing the greenway, fence repairs, tree work, items of that nature. We would also propose funding a golf course irrigation system feasibility study. That system is nearing the end of its useful life. We anticipate that that project will be in excess of a million dollars, but in order to have a good understanding and handle of scope, we do need to conduct a feasibility study. So this would essentially be Phase One of that project. In regards to the expansion of the multi-use trail, this was a joint regional initiative with the town of Bluefield. This, in fact, would be an extension of our existing infrastructure, but this is grant-funded. We have listed it. We are somewhat concerned about whether or not this, this money is actually going to come to us from the state of Connecticut. Unfortunately, the fund at the state that would support this grant is in crisis, and we keep getting conflicting information from various state officials as to whether or not this money is actually going to come to us. We're remaining hopeful and optimistic that it will come, but, again, for the purposes of budgeting, we have included that state grant since they, the state did, in fact, tell us that the money was coming. For public works, investing in pavement of our roads, sidewalk resurfacing, replacement of a large dump truck, so these would be the vehicles you typically see when you're out seeing your folks ply your roads, and this ash borer tree mitigation. I'm not sure how familiar people are of this. It's a very serious problem. In order to get a good handle on this and to do the tree work that we properly need to do, we would most likely need a capital contribution, not only from this year, but next year as well, to properly address that, that issue.
We have one in this year's, too, don't we?
Didn't we put money towards that?
We did, we put like forty or fifty grand in last year. Tom Roy's getting expensive to cut down these trees.
And this next slide shows you our projected debt service over a number of years. Again, working with that seven percent target line or seven percent goal that was set by the Board of Finance. So what would this proposed budget mean for our, our average taxpayer in town? Well, based on the proposed manager's budget, the mill rate would decrease from thirty-eight point six mills to thirty-six point five six mills. That does not include the mill rate for the fire district. This would be a mill rate decrease of approximately two point two mills. Again, for budgeting purposes, we use the assumption that our mill rate for motor vehicles would be the same as what it is for real estate. So if somebody has a median-valued single-family home and their valuation did not change, the impact of this budget would reflect approximately a five point seven percent decrease in their taxes for the upcoming year. However, this was a reval year, and so we looked at what would essentially be a flat, a flat impact of this budget for somebody with a median-valued single-family home, and if their value was six percent less prior to revaluation, the tax impact would essentially be flat. And so a breakdown of a person's tax bill, where do the tax dollars go? Again, this just shows the breakdown of what portion of your tax bill funds which, which particular municipal or education service. So highlights of this budget. This budget funds your current services and programs. It invests in existing infrastructure and assets, utilizing cash for capital for your ongoing and routine capital needs. This restores funding for our ongoing operating expenditures that were funded in fiscal seventeen eighteen with reserve funds. This budget advances Board of Selectman initiatives such as economic development. It addresses the impact of the governor's budget proposal and recent reductions in state aid. Suggested future areas of focus would be to continue to monitor the state budget and our intergovernmental revenue, to continue to monitor the status of our assessment appeals due to revaluation and the potential impact on our revenue and mill rate projections as the budget process progresses, that we continue to focus on cash to capital for our ongoing and routine capital needs, that we develop an application and review process for our public agency funding requests. Additional areas of focus, that we engage in a cost recovery analysis and discussion regarding programming and community use of the larger culture parks and recreation department, that we continue to increase our fund balance and we maintain our commitment to funding our OPEB and pension liabilities. And lastly, because you do have a couple of budgeting nerds now in your role of town manager and deputy town manager, we want to continue making improvements to our budget document to reflect GFOA recommended best practices. So we do have a budget workshop coming up on March tenth, potentially more if needed. I would ask board members to please flag items for further discussion or analysis. Please ask questions, and when possible, send questions to the town manager's office in advance of the workshop. That will help Melissa and I expedite responses to your questions and help us to be as prepared as possible for the session on the tenth. As a reminder, we have SimsburyOpenGov.com. This is a wonderful tool to promote financial transparency in our organization and for the community, so I would encourage folks to hop online and take a look at that. And lastly, we've highlighted key budget dates. Additionally, the Board of Selectman budget presentation to the Board of Finance is tentatively scheduled for March twentieth. I would like to note that these dates and times are subject to revision, but this is our preliminary budget calendar that we're currently working with. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, well.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you only been here four weeks?
I have only been here four weeks.
Good, so, so we'll get you any questions that we have when we have a chance to more thoroughly review the material before, so we can make the use, most use of our time on March tenth. Right, thank you. Any other questions for Maria?
I think we'll save them for.
Okay.
Can I have a question? The, the decrease of debt deduct, of debt service by eight forty-eight, eight ninety, that's the collective debt of both the Board of Ed and, and for Select, and the?
Correct.
Okay.
And what we did with that, I'm sorry, I should have pointed that out, is that we've reallocated that decrease in debt service for our cash to capital. And so, again, the town items that we had were, again, what we would consider ongoing or routine in nature, and so not wanting to bond for those items. And so by reallocating that cash to capital, we were able to achieve that with this particular budget. And I believe we also proposed funding, there was a facilities master plan for the Board of Ed in the proposed budget, and I believe we looked at funding cash to capital for that as well, as opposed to bonding for a study, which, again, we just didn't feel was appropriate.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay. Moving on to the First Selectmen's report, wanted to send my congratulations to the Simsbury Public Library for receiving a four hundred and five thousand dollar grant from the state. Now, this grant matches money that's already been approved by the town to finish a portion of the library's lower level to become flexible program space. Construction is scheduled to start in October and last about six months. We just mentioned it, but we've got a budget workshop March tenth. That's all day with additional time if needed on March fifteenth. And the Board of Selectmen is tentatively scheduled to take up budget adoption at either our regular meeting on the twelfth or that meeting on the fifteenth, if that meeting's needed. On the Deepwater Wind Solar Projects, I don't have any new information since our last meeting to share, but I wanted to just reiterate where it stands, because this is a question I continue to get a lot. So late January, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to appeal the Siting Council's decision to approve the project. We're currently in the process of negotiating with Deepwater Wind, and we're focusing on six key elements of the project. Our priority throughout is to ensure public safety and minimize the visual impact of the project. And if we reach an agreement with the developer, that would remove the need for a more drawn-out appeal. Anyone? Anyone interested can find a more comprehensive explanation on the six points that I was describing on the town's website, under Town News and Updates from the February 15th meeting. I'll also mention, on the economic development front, that Big Y, which has been permitted for quite some time, ready to build, Big Y has put the property up for sale. So I wanted to just confirm that that's taken place, because that's another question that I get frequently. So that's the First Selectmen's update, Town Manager's update.
In regards to Board of Selectmen business, I wanted to update you on the Hot Meadows Street banner policy. My understanding from staff members was that the board had flagged that as an item for future review by April 1st. So staff has been working on updating the policy. We have been working to create draft forms, and we're also conducting a cost analysis that we will bring forward to you in terms of what it would cost to actually hang the signs. We plan to bring that to you for your review at your March 26th meeting. I just wanted to let you know that it hadn't fallen off our radar, and we are actively working on that issue for you. In regards to communications, I've included a new section in your packet in your agenda entitled Communications. The purpose of this section is to include information and correspondence to the board that I thought may be of interest to some or all of the members. These aren't items that would necessarily require any action, but again, I thought that could be information, again, of interest, such as, in this packet, I included the cost legislative agenda as well as the CROG legislative agenda. In regards to additions to the agenda for this evening, late last week, my office had received a request to have multiple appointments added to the agenda. I have prepared a list for you of those appointments. If you would like to add those to the agenda, you may certainly do so with a two-thirds vote of this body. Under Departmental News and Notes, an update for you regarding revaluation. We've received over 236 assessment appeals. That may sound like a large number, but it's actually not more than what we would normally expect following a revaluation. However, it is a large volume. So the Board of Assessment Appeals believes that it will be unlikely for them to complete their hearing work by the statutory deadline of March 31st. The Board of Assessment Appeals will be meeting later this week to determine if, in fact, they want to file an extension to me. State statute does allow them to ask for an extension to the town manager, and that extension could be for up to an additional two months. So I should know more at the end of the week, and again, if they feel that they need the extension, they will file accordingly. I have a note here about the library, and I think that First Selectmen covered that very well. We're excited that we've received the funding from the Bond Commission and look forward to the finished lower-level space for programming use. Under Planning and Development, we have a new hire who began work today, Dwight Carlson, our Deputy Building Official. He has served for municipalities in the past, and most recently was serving as the Director of Facilities for the Canton Board of Education. I'm excited in particular about this position because it's a regional initiative, and this position is shared with the town of Bloomfield through a professional service agreement, and they are partially funding this position as well. Finding qualified building officials in the state of Connecticut right now is incredibly difficult because of the licensing requirements, and there's just a true shortage. So when a community really only has the workload needs for a part-time person, it's next to near impossible to actually find a part-time licensed building official. So we needed a part-time person, Bloomfield needed a part-time person, and this was an opportunity for us to share a staff member, and again, we were able to accomplish that through a shared services agreement. Under Police, Chief Ingberthson's last day of work is February 28th of this week. I want to thank the chief for his dedicated and meritorious service to our community, and I want to wish him well in his retirement. The police department is coordinating a retirement celebration for him. The event will be held on Tuesday, March 27th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Simsbury Inn, and I've included information for you regarding how you might RSVP and purchase tickets. Under the Town Manager's Office, a quick update on our leadership team recruitments. On February 20th, I had an opportunity to meet with the Board of Finance to discuss desired qualifications for a Director of Finance as well as a recruitment plan. The job ad for Finance Director Treasurer has since been released, and applications are now being accepted. We are scheduled to conduct our first-round interviews on April 4th. I have also now reached out to the Chair of the Culture, Parks, and Recreation Commission regarding the recruitment for our Director of Culture, Parks, and Recreation. We are attempting to schedule a special meeting with the Commission for the week of March 5th, and this would also be to discuss desired qualifications and a recruitment plan for that particular position. And we don't have a lot to update you on the police chief recruitment. We are still accepting applications for that position. The closing date is March 2nd, so this Friday, and we have March 22nd held for our first-round interviews for that position. Lastly, under Special Events, Social Services has provided information regarding a mindfulness series. This will be offered at the high school April 16th through May 4th. This is a collaboration with the Youth Services Bureau, Simsbury High School, our library and community for care, and then information regarding that is provided for you. And that concludes my report this evening.
Great, thanks, Maria. Is there a motion to add the additional appointments to tonight's agenda in the Appointments and Resignations section?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll add those to the agenda tonight. So Selectmen Actions, Item A is tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective February 26, 2018, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $15,870.20 and to authorize the town manager, Maria Capriola, to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Item B is the proposed purchase and sale agreement of 23 Mountain Road. So this is a property which the town took ownership of back in 2015 after the previous owner failed to pay taxes for many years, and we have a buyer who's interested in purchasing the property for $30,000. Maria, anything you want to add to that?
So this was a property that we had obtained through foreclosure. They had not paid taxes in over 15 years, so during the last 15 years, we lost over $90,000 in uncollected property taxes for this particular property. If we do sell this property, it will be sold as is. We think that, and we, the collective, we being myself, Deputy Town Manager Melissa Appleby, who had been working on this prior to my arrival, and our town attorney, feel that $30,000 for the property is probably the best reasonable offer we can hope for. Previous offers we had received were much lower than this, and that once this property is rehabbed, it will be added to the grand list as a rehabbed property and will be generating property tax revenue for us again. The net to the general fund after we pay our real estate agent, the fees owed would be about $28,500.
Yeah, so this would not only, you know, be, you know, some money for the town, but it would also hopefully put the property back on the taxpaying rolls, right?
Exactly, correct.
Okay, any other questions for Maria?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion effective February 26, 2018, to approve the purchase and sale agreement for the town-owned property at 23 Mountain Road as presented, and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the agreement, and further authorize the town attorney to execute the transaction?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Item C is the recommended appointment of Captain Nicholas Bolter as interim police chief. As you know, our chief is retiring this week, March 1st. Actually, February 28th is his last day, right? The town manager and the police commission are recommending that Captain Nicholas Bolter serve as the interim police chief until a permanent chief is identified. Are there, was there anyone who wanted to speak on this?
I'd be happy to. The police commission has been working very closely with the town manager over the last couple of weeks since she started. She's been a great help to the commission, not only in working to have an interim police chief, which we think is important because the process is probably going to take several months to get somebody permanently into that position, and we want to make sure everybody knows who's in charge down there. The other thing is, it's been a great model, I think, for us as we move towards selecting a permanent police chief in order for us jointly between the town manager and the commission to get a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for you to act on. So the commission is very much in support of the captain assuming the position of interim chief.
Great, thank you.
Here.
Is there any other questions?
Very excited about this for Captain Bolter, but it would go without saying, we talked about the chief for a second. I think we're in such a great position with an interim chief because of our current chief. Chief Ingberthson has done a phenomenal job over his tenure of preparing this department, preparing his men and women in our police department for this so that we're in good hands, despite the fact that we're losing arguably the best police chief in the state of Connecticut, if not beyond. You know, as we all know, and we've seen the accolades, but, you know, the chief, as we all refer to him, has been an integral part of this community for as long as I've been out of high school, which is longer than you think now. But, you know, in terms of really reshaping and reforming what community policing is like, and his presence is felt on the streets and in our stores and in our businesses and with the officers on their bikes, and, you know, as a kid growing up in this town, to see the interactions with our police department today, well, it's always been good. It really is the definition, I think, of community policing. In addition to that, the Calea certification, one of the highest accreditations that a police department can get, in part to Chief Ingberthson and Captain Bolter's hard work in conjunction with the police commission, has really been a notch in this town's belt, I think, and really something we should all be proud of. So really do appreciate everything that the chief has done for us, and I think we're in great hands with the captain leading us going forward, so.
Thanks, Sean. I echo that, and I send my deepest appreciation to Chief Ingberthson, and I'm really glad that we have, you know, Captain Bolter, who's been with the department a long time and is able to provide that seamless transition during the interim, so thank you. Is there anybody else on the board who wanted to say anything?
Just for one procedural thing, while I echo both of your comments regarding the chief, and we will miss him. I personally have a deep respect for him and his ability and what he's done with his town and with his department, and I am very pleased that Captain Bolter is here to take the reins while we are in this transition process. Do we need to make two separate motions, one regarding the appointment and one regarding the salary?
We, I was going to lump it into one, but I'd take your lead on that.
I think you could lump it into one. The motion that I provided includes addressing both matters, so if you wanted to read that whole paragraph at once, I think you could take it as one motion.
Okay.
Great.
Would you like me to read the motion?
Thank you.
Read on, Selectmen Cook.
Sean had his chance earlier during the...
I move to appoint Captain Nicholas Bolter to the position of interim police chief effective March 1st, 2018. Until the date upon the permanent police chief officially begins work in Simsbury, further move to increase Captain Bolter's salary by 5% during his interim appointment as police chief, and that his other employment-related benefits as a non-union employee remain in place. At the conclusion of his service as interim police chief, and if he is not appointed to the permanent police chief's position, Captain Bolter shall be permitted to return to his position as captain with the salary and employment-related benefits assigned to that position.
Second.
All right, Chris, second. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, moving on to Item D, which is meeting room setup. My hope is to be able to put this issue to bed tonight, and hopefully at future meetings get to see all of you more clearly. So...
Are you sure?
We like that.
So I guess the two things I wanted to touch on, one, Maria, you've done some benchmarking, looking at what other towns do who have town managers, so this is a topical conversation given our transition to new form of government. So one is the shape of the table, and the second is your place, where you would sit. So could you just share a little bit about the benchmarking you did, because I thought that was interesting?
So I checked with nine communities, mostly in the region, to see where the manager sits during their meeting. Two-thirds of the community, the manager sits directly next to either the first select person, the chair, or the mayor, depending on what they call that person. And the other third of the communities, the manager also sits at the dais and at the table with the full board, but at the end of the table, sort of that staff is essentially right next to where Sean would be sitting. In terms of my personal preference, I'm not sure how the board feels about it. Again, in my former life, I sat immediately next to the mayor. However, I do feel that these are your meetings, and I think my personal preference would be to sit at the end of the table, and I'm there if you need assistance. Again, that's just my personal preference, but I'm happy to accommodate whatever the board is most comfortable with.
Okay, maybe I could take the easiest question first, which is, I think we have consensus on a U-shaped setup, and you did some research and found that for a nominal cost, we could try that, basically.
Correct, right. So I consulted with Tom Roy, our Public Works Director. We could install a temporary tabletop that's more U-shaped in nature. The materials cost would be around $200 to $300, plus, again, a small amount of staff time to actually install the tabletop. So if we wanted to experiment with a U-shaped, we could certainly do that at a pretty modest cost and make sure that we're comfortable with that setup before we, you know, proceed to spend funds on a permanent table solution.
Okay, and what are others' thoughts on where the town manager would sit?
Personally, I support whatever Maria's highest point of comfort is, quite honestly. I'm fine with both positioning. I mean, I was on the Board of Ed for nine years, and the superintendent sits right next to the chairperson, but I really defer to what your comfort level is personally.
Again, I think my preference would be to start sitting at the end of the table, but if we find that that's not working well, or it would be more beneficial to have me in the middle of the group, I'd be happy to try that as well.
Okay.
I like the idea of trying out the U shape again. I mean, that's kind of how we had it way back when, and I think we have some tables in storage or something that we could use to see how we feel about that. And if it doesn't work, you know, we can go back. We're all learning together in this process, so that everybody's comfortable.
What are we going to do with this? I kind of like this.
Right, so my understanding with the temporary tabletop is it would actually go on top of this, but then if we decided that we liked that temporary tabletop, if we preferred that style, that I think that this would be uninstalled and a more permanent U-shaped would be installed, but we would have to work through that.
To make sure it goes through the open bidding process to acquire this.
Okay, so good. I just didn't want to, I wanted to get the guidance before giving you the full thumbs up, so I think you've got good direction now. All right, thanks, Maria.
Have we finished with our episode of The Crown? And hopefully we'll never speak to this again. We do important things up here. So let's move.
You got it. All right, appointments and resignations. So since this was a reassessment year, the Board of Assessment Appeals is facing a higher number of appeals than usual. The Republican and Democratic town committees have both been asked to recommend one person each to serve as a temporary member of that board during this busy period, and we're awaiting the Republicans' recommendation, but the Democrats have put forward the name of Regina Pin. So is there a motion effective February 26, 2018, to appoint Regina Pin as temporary regular member of the Board of Assessment Appeals with the term expiring on September 30th of 2018?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we have some additional appointments as well. Is there a motion to appoint Andrew Walter to the Public Building Committee with a term ending January 1st of 2022? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to appoint Joseph Daley to the Recycling Committee with a term ending 12 to 2019? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to appoint Philip Perciello to the Insurance Committee with a term ending December 2nd of 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to appoint Stephen Antonio to the Fair Rent Commission with a term ending November 30th of 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to appoint Sheri Landerman to the Fair Rent Commission with a term ending November 30th of 2019? November 30th of 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion to appoint Sherri Landerman to the Tourism Committee with a term ending December 2nd of 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, got those all in. All right. Last but not least, is there a motion to appoint Lawrence Boardman as an alternate for the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term ending December 2nd of 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Were there any changes anyone would suggest to the minutes from our last meeting? The only one I caught was at the very, very end, just before we adjourned.
You're happy to announce this, aren't you?
I am. To change Ms. Askam to Mr. Askam.
It doesn't bother me, but whatever. I'm fine with it either way, whatever works.
All right. Any other changes? Sorry, Sean, I just noticed.
That's okay. It's that strong female side, Sean, that's going through the climb.
Okay, so seeing no other changes than with that change. All right, we're good, all right. Are there any liaison or subcommittee reports?
Yes, one, can I borrow that for a second? Just, once again, just for the camera, March 14th, the Community for Care is presenting a program called The Dangers of Vaping. It will be Wednesday, March 14th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Simsbury Public Library. We are very pleased that the Simsbury Police Department and the Farmington Valley Health District are going to lead the panel discussion on this, and they are also going to provide vaping paraphernalia for everybody to see, so that you can see what it looks like, so parents can get an idea of what to look for, and we feel that it will be a very informative program for all ages.
Carol? Yeah, Sean?
Relatively quick from my side. Obviously, we've been talking about the recruitment process, and particularly around the Police Chief. The Police Commission and our Town Manager have done an excellent job of getting that off and running, as we talked about. That application period is out there till March 2nd, and Eric and I are involved with the Police Commission, and Maria involved in the interviews as that comes up. So, we're looking forward to moving that through quickly, but effectively, to hopefully bring back, well, I know we'll bring back a strong recommendation to this Board. So, if there's questions, if there's thoughts along the way, please get them to us now, as we're immersed in that. The second is, and this is my annual budget plea to those at home, everybody yells at us about their tax rate, or their mill rate, or their expenditures all year, and two people show up to the budget hearings. That's the meeting where you can effect change on this budget. You can add things, you can get things taken away. We really do listen to the community, and one of the hardest things for this Board, and I think I echo everybody's sentiment here, is that we don't hear from the community during the budget process, and that's really the time to come out and talk to us, and your feelings, your opinions, what our priorities are, are driven by you. And if we don't hear from you, we assume we're doing a good job, we're going in the direction that this community wants. So, now is the time to speak up. If you can't come to a meeting, you can email us, you can call Town Hall. There's a dozen different ways to get in contact with us. So, a little bit of a soapbox, but this is really important, because the items that we choose to spend your tax dollars on are being decided right now. And we've all got our personal preference, and we've all talked to different members of the community, but if you have a strong feeling one way or another, please, now is the time to reach out to us.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. Any other, any other reports?
Parks and Rec did not make this.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. So, this is a new section, Communications. So, I wanted to see if there were any items in your packet under Communications that anyone wanted to bring up to discuss tonight, or potentially add as an agenda item to a future meeting?
The only one that caught my eye was the budget request for the Visitor Center. I didn't see it mentioned in any of our prior budget discussion, and I didn't know if there was a reason we aren't moving that forward, or we are waiting for a presentation.
Yeah. So, this is, so on that particular issue, this was, the Visitor Center was part of the late round of cuts that were made with the option of potentially restoring that money.
Yes.
If, I'm just sort of doing this for the cameras.
No, I know, but that's important.
So, I think it's a, it's a question for this Board, and I would welcome anybody's feedback, whether, potentially, that's something we would want to add as an agenda to a future meeting, if we wanted to take that vote up to potentially either restore, you know, so we're not just talking about restoring money to that organization, because there are other organizations, too, that were cut as part of that round. So, to me, it would be part of a larger conversation. Other thoughts?
I think we should probably include it in our budget hearing discussion.
Yes.
Because if it's not proposed for the future year, and we put it back, again, these are potentially smaller amounts, but we should...
That's where I was headed with it. I think we should bring it back to the budget.
Let's have that all at once.
And make that part of the discussion, because we did have discussion about it last year, and I think we owe it to everybody to bring it back and talk about that.
Yeah, because it was a number of items, right? I mean, we cut Main Street back by 5,000. We took a number of items out, so...
This was part of the equation, and I think we need to discuss that.
Yeah. It's about, I was looking, among four organizations, I want to say it was about $20,000.
Yep.
So. Okay, great.
That was my comment.
Anything else under Communication? Okay. I have, I think we're on the executive session portion of the agenda. So, is there a motion to adjourn to executive session with Maria Capriola, Melissa Appleby, Bob DiCrescenzo, and Jesse Langer concerning pending claims and litigation regarding Deepwater Wind? Who am I missing? And Jamie Rabbit?
Yeah, a quick question. Do we have two scouts in our audience tonight? And did you guys have a presentation or a question you may not have been able to bring up earlier because of protocol?
They have questions for someone.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Make sure that they're...
Yeah, we'll catch you on the way out. Great.
Thank you for coming.
So, I put the motion on the table?
I'll make it.
Sean makes it. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate it.